All right, I'd like to call the -- to order the March 8th, 2011 meeting of the City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect all members of council are present.
Thank you. And then on to current business. Do we have any clarifications of items on the consent calendar, Councilmember Daigle?
None.
And Councilmember Curry?
I have none.
Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
Councilmember Hill?
I have none.
Councilmember Rozansky stepped out for the moment. Mayor Protem Gardner?
Yeah.
And I have none. All right. We'll presume that Steve had none. So let's move on to the item for special events. Do we have a staff report?
We do, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is an item that has been in the works quite some time and as I announce it, I'd note that it's clearly not done. We wanted to come to you at an interim point and talk with you about how the city supports, in terms of sponsorships or fee waivers or other, the special event process. And Tara Finnegan is going to make the presentation, but I'd note, actually, Councilmember Rozansky's appropriate concerns that arguably, well, obviously, you don't see folks associated with special events in the audience and we need to make sure they are involved in this discussion. And it's my commitment to involve them. I did want your input, at least initially, to make sure we were on the right path to guide that decision. So arguably, we may need another study session about this specific issue before it comes to you for adoption because these special events have obviously been in the works for years, many of them, and used to doing things a certain way, and we don't want to surprise folks with that. So with that, I'd --
But on the issue of surprise, I mean, we have discussed this in public session before, have we not?
We have, and Mr. Rozansky's not here, but he was very strong about saying that he felt like the -- all the people associated with special events should have been given better notice and been in the audience today to hear more about that. So that's my -- and I think he's right, that they needed to be -- they need to be consulted as this process goes forward.
But our timetable is going to be very tight in order to squeeze in another study.
I think we can still do it quickly because this is the year we wanted to enact that, so I'd welcome the rest of your comments about it, but recognizing Mr. Rozansky's concerns.
Okay, but didn't we also have quite a bit of feedback last year, just as we were doing things, sort of stumbling our way through and getting --
We did have quite a bit of feedback, yep.
Reaction from people who are getting these kinds of permits?
And indeed, I think we made some good changes that Tara will talk to you about, including fees for police services, which is the major problem that we -- major concern we get. So, yeah, maybe we'll hear Tara's presentation and then take it from there.
If I'll just interject, since this is follow what Dave said. I did send a couple of emails to Dave and Tara today because I did think it was appropriate that certainly the ones that are getting the aid now to be here to hear the discussion. I mean, I don't think we need another study session on this either, but, you know, then we push it off to the council meeting, and if there's objections or changes that need to be made, it just seemed like these people have a lot of interest, a lot vested in the money that we're giving them, may have to make other arrangements for money, and so I -- it just seems like we should have invited them in. I mean, that's a study session, people are here to learn, councilmembers as well as the public, and so why not have the public that's most interested be here? It just didn't make sense. I see no public here who's interested in this matter, so. You could have just sent us the staff report, and we didn't have to have a presentation from Tara. I don't need to have Tara read back the staff report that she prepared. It doesn't make sense. I can read the changes myself. We're wasting our time, so that's my feeling.
Well, all right, but I think the most substantive changes actually have already been executed as to the impact on the event organizers last year, right?
We were very clear last year in my meetings with those who requested a meeting, and there were a number of them. And then we also sent a letter to everybody saying 2011 would be different, that I didn't think the city manager had the authority, and it's clearly that the city manager does not have the authority to waive fees, and that that should be done all at the council level in terms of not necessarily waiver, but sponsorship or support. So it's very clear they got that news, but to Mr. Rozansky's point, they weren't -- I don't know that we involved them as much as we should have with today and today's action.
Today's action is mostly process change.
It is.
As opposed to really substantive financial impact change, I think.
Well, no, because I think you're proposing anyway that you're going to have a fixed budget now, and we're going to carve it up based upon what that fixed budget is, similar to what we do with CDGB funds, which is, I think, different than how we've handled it in the past. We had a list, I mean, maybe you had an idea in your head how much we should put towards this or not, but I think we are handling it differently. And again, it just doesn't make sense not to have those people here to talk about it and see what their interest is or what they -- how they feel about it, or if they have any ideas on how to do the process differently.
I don't disagree with that. Okay.
We are here to talk primarily about process, but there is a funding element as well. Just for a quick overview, for those that are not familiar with this issue, historically, this is going back to before 2010, the city handled any requests for event sponsorship or support individually, on a case-by-case basis, and even departments would get requests directly, and they would handle those independently. We gave support in the form of grants, sponsorships, waivers, and we did some research last year, as you may recall, the Great Spreadsheet Project, and we found that some groups were receiving some of the above, all of the above in different forms, and some groups that were having events here received nothing because they didn't know that those opportunities were there. We also found that it was a very large annual expense to the tune of about $430,000 in grants, sponsorships, and waivers. Of course, last year, we were having economic downturn, we were reducing costs, and at that time, you asked staff to improve this process while still providing a means of supporting our community events and organizations. As Dave indicated earlier, we did notify in writing and in many conversations that he's had individually and we've had here at council that change was coming, and we put some initial changes in place, which I will cover in a moment, and so far, we've brought the cost down to about $340,000. What we did was centralize all requests through the city manager's office, and he had the goal of reducing waivers. And also last year, when you adopted your budget, you reduced some of the council grants that you give to events. These are the approved grants in your current budget year, and that's a decrease of about $67,000 from the previous fiscal year.
Is that all events, or is that just a certain threshold, $10,000?
Those -- these are the events that you actually put into your budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is not waivers and other forms of support. So we took a look at this from a process standpoint, and some of the complaints that we received last year, as you're aware of, is that there was some inequity, that it wasn't truly a public process, if it wasn't -- if everything wasn't coming before council like your grants were. So we -- staff looked at various ways of leveling off the playing field, if you will, and finally decided that a process similar to what you do with community development block grants might be applicable here, and that's really what I'm here to see if you agree with that. What we would do is have one annual funding cycle that runs in conjunction with our budget planning each year. All applications for support would be due at the same time, they'd all be reviewed at the same time, so therefore, they'd all come forward to you for review and approval or amendment on the same day. To break that down to some details, we would do, obviously not this year, but starting next year, all applications, we would do a call for applications in late winter or the early spring. We would promote that, we would send a letter directly and emails directly to those that have received support in the past, we'd put on the website, we'd have it here at City Hall. We'd really make sure that our event organizers were well aware of that deadline, and we'd have a firm application deadline.
Tara, may I interrupt for a second? So for that list that you showed that was in the budget for this year?
Yes.
Have all of those folks basically been through an application process similar to what you just described?
If they received support at the $20,000 funding level or above, they did go through the Special Event Advisory Committee application and review process.
Okay, so for almost all of those folks up on that list, at least, this year will be the second time through, whether they will have had to fill out an application and --
Exactly.
Okay.
Then we would use or ask the Special Events Advisory Committee to wear a different hat, and rather than just looking at the applications for $20,000 and above, we'd ask them to look at all of the applications, and based upon some set criteria. And the criteria are very similar to what they already have in place. We just made a couple of modifications, which we can go over in a moment. From there, that list, their rankings, would be forwarded to a staff committee of admin services, recreation, and a member of the city manager's office, and we would take a look at the rankings and assign some recommended funding levels based upon the amount of money the city manager and administrative services director tells us are available for the coming budget year for events. We would then forward those rankings on to the council with the recommended levels of funding for you to review, amend, or approve. Couple of the changes we made to the evaluation criteria that the Special Events Advisory Committee already has in place, this first one actually isn't a change. We initially had events must be held within the city. We've softened that to should be held, again, because these are criteria, they don't have to meet all of them, we're hoping they meet most of them. We're saying the city's support, and this is also pretty much a carryover, should not equal more than 25% of the event budget, and this mainly is to make sure that they have other funding sources, so they don't rely solely upon the city for their support. This is new this year, applicants must allow us, if the city sees a need, to review their financial statements. And we're also, we really want to tune in to make sure that these events directly benefit a Newport Beach or Orange County nonprofit organization.
And how do we determine that benefit? Because I know some of us were a little surprised with the Orange County Marathon, that we thought there were contributions made, and it's different, that they get an opportunity to participate and hopefully make some money by whatever method they can do tied in with the marathon. So do we have any definition of what the benefit is to be, or what a benefit is?
We are asking that at least 20% of the event proceeds go to a nonprofit organization. So in some cases, like I had a conversation with one of the chambers today, they are a nonprofit, they're a 501(c)(6), so their Taste of Newport, the Boat Parade, those events are for that organization, that's a nonprofit organization. In other cases, you'll find an event, and I can't think of a good example right now, that perhaps works in conjunction with a charity, and they put the charity name on their event. We want to make sure at least 20% of those event proceeds are going to support that charity.
Yes, ma'am.
But defined as cash given to that charity as opposed to offering an opportunity for them to generate their own contributions by --
Right.
Okay.
Counselmember Curry?
Yeah, I'm not sure that these new criteria actually have been thought through for all of their unintended consequences. For example, I'm not sure this year, because the theater is under construction, that the Newport Beach Film Festival actually take place for the majority of time in the city.
Right.
Clearly, the Newport to Ensenada Boat Race does not take place within the city. If we ever were to do a float again in the Rose Parade, that's not in the city. So I think that that is a -- one of these little poison pills here that has unintended consequences that perhaps doesn't need to be here. The other thing is, as to 25% of the total budget, you know, most of these are not necessarily charitable events. I don't know, the Film Festival, I think, probably supports some educational programs, but I'm not sure that it's -- that Restaurant Week, for example, if it has or should have a charitable component to it in terms of what we're promoting. So I don't know that that is an appropriate criteria to add here. It looks like these have sort of been shaved to help some applicants and not others.
I can address a couple of those. This Film Festival is a 501(c)(3), they are a nonprofit, so they would be absolutely qualified for this support level. That's why we softened -- we did think about the Orange County Marathon and Newport to Ensenada, and that's why we softened that language back to should be principally located. That actually is a carryover, that was in the existing Special Events Advisory Committee criteria.
Okay, but that's number 12 here that you've added, says event must directly benefit a Newport Beach or Orange County-based charitable organization. I don't know that, I mean, I don't know what the definition of charitable organization is, but I don't think Newport to Ensenada Race, Restaurant Week, or the Film Festival are charitable organizations, they're organizations that are community-based organizations, but maybe that's a better --
Or not-for-profit might be a better way to say that.
Well, I mean, this was kind of the distinction I was trying to draw on in our emails today, is that because you use charitable organization, but then you say 20% must be donated to a not-for-profit organization, so, I mean, the criteria in the language doesn't make sense, I guess, in relation to our past contributions to nonprofit organizations.
I think we should change that to not-for-profit, because then the chambers, the bids, the restaurant association, all of those would be covered by that.
Okay, Councilmember Daigle?
I think that the applicants will balk at having to provide financial documents, and there can be no end to that. You know, all of a sudden, you know, the city's like, well, provide verification of your lease, we want to see your lease, and I just think provide, most applicants, if they're asked to provide financial documents, they take issue with that. And then you can also get into, well, you're directing money towards a charity, now let's see the financial documents of the charity. I just think it opens up a huge can of worms for people, and I think what we're really concerned about is what's the benefit to the community, is kind of what we're looking at, and is the amount of subsidy appropriate to the cost of the event?
Actually, in response to that, I do feel more of a need to be able to have access to financial information on the event organizers from the perspective of having some level of assurance about their financial capacity and being able to verify if we chose to, this isn't that we would do it in every case, but have the ability to verify, you know, the contribution levels, for example, and that sort of thing.
If I may add, Trace McCrane, our finance director, these, as due diligence for giving public funds to any organization, that is a typical agreement-type contract clause that we would have access, but Mayor Hen's correct, we're not going to look at every and all, but we do want that ability to be able to see the financial reporting of the event, not necessarily all the charitable organizations associated with that event, but that event, if we are going to be giving public funds to that event, then we should have the right to see how those funds are spent.
Mr. Mayor, there's a huge difference between access to the financials of the event versus of the organization.
Right.
And this is not clear, and I think, to me, that would clear it up.
Yeah, that's definitely what we would want, is just the financials of the event.
I wonder if, to the Councilmember Daigle's point, if it would be smart to have a dollar threshold, we may not be so concerned about a $2,500 grant, but we might be much more concerned about a $75,000 grant.
Well, particularly if it's a new event coming forward, and we don't know the organization that well. I mean, here with a lot of these groups, we've had a track record and so, but I would say, hey, we're going to give you this money, and then all of a sudden, they're gone, they can't make the event happen because they don't have the financial wherewithal, that might be very valuable.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Hill, the event is fine, but the overall financial of the organization, I think, is a can of worms.
Councilmember Selich?
How would something like the Bellbo Island Parade fit into this? It's not anything that makes money, they make no money, they may come in and ask for a grant to support the cost of the police service, which I think is probably their biggest cost, which say, maybe it's 35% of their budget. How would they fall into all this criteria?
We'd certainly encourage them to apply through this process, and that there should be something strong enough in the rankings and that indeed, it's reaffirming of a certain community value or community support that doesn't exclude them for, by not meeting some of the other criteria, but my hope that some, a group like that would rise to the top.
And their ask for cash would be much less than --
I say, yeah, isn't there a threshold here?
Well, yes and no. I would prefer that there not be a threshold, because remember in the municipal code, well, there's a threshold of $1,000. The city manager can only waive $1,000, up to $1,000 worth of fees, and routinely, me and the city manager before me have waived much more than that, it's just not the right thing to do.
So then we would, if, say, the amount was $400,000, then someone like the Bellbo Island Parade would be competing against the Film Festival and everything else?
That's in effect what happens today. If we, but, well, there's, we don't put any fence around it at all, the number is just whatever is ultimately waived at the end of the year. I would like to put a fence around it and yes, have them --
Well, I think we all agreed that we wanted more of a fence approach. So they would all, anybody over $1,000 would be coming in with a --
Right.
Okay.
And the advantage to this is, you know, staff is going to suggest a total bucket of funding for these purposes. Council can make whatever decision it wishes on how big that bucket ought to be during the budget process, and they'll be able to make that decision in light of all of the known needs to participate out of that bucket. And so I think that's all very good and workable in terms of format here, and council will still have full discretion to modify staff's recommendations for any individual charity and for the total, the amount in total, so. And it'll come through the budget process, which is a good thing. Okay, Tara?
So under this new format, if you agree with it, there would be no more waivers or support kind of sprinkled throughout the year, it would all be done with your approval at one time. We would, to help the nonprofits when they come in, or, excuse me, the event organizers when they come in, we would make sure that they knew what their estimated costs were upfront, so they would have a detailed sheet saying, based upon what you're telling us you want to do, this is how, this is what it would cost you to do that event here in Newport Beach. We're actually going to, once we get your approval on some direction, we're actually going to send those estimates out to all of the nonprofits that had events here last year, so they can see what the coming cost would be for this, for 2011, excuse me, for the fiscal year, next fiscal year. One of the key issues we have had is the hourly rate for police officers that are assigned to some of the events. Under our current rate structure, that is about $172 per hour, and we've received a number of complaints on that. What we're proposing to you is to lower that back to the, what's it, the FLSA overtime rate, and that would be about 74, almost $75 per hour per officer, and we think that would substantially reduce some of these cost estimates for the nonprofits and help them with their events.
Justification for either number?
These, the 172, Tracy can probably respond to better, that was based upon the fee study?
Actually, the 172 was calculated by the police department, I'm not sure who, it was a couple of years ago, before my time and before the existing police chief's time. I'm assuming it was a fully loaded rate, and that maybe they worked with our consultant at the time to find out. I have taken their current overhead rate and don't come anywhere near this, so I'm just making assumptions. The $74 is actually a straight overtime rate. I would, as your finance director, make an argument that we should have an overhead calculation on top of that to get full cost recovery, but this is the stated overtime rate, standard rate for the police officer now, and it is your council, this council's, you know, decision what to charge. You know, I could make a, I wouldn't make a recommendation for the 172 because I couldn't justify that at all. The 74 is their standard overtime rate without overhead.
How much would you add for overhead?
Their overhead rate was, I think, about 70%, so you would add on top of the 74. I have no idea why it was more than double before.
Well, that was, that's kind of the issue, if our, if we're charged, if an officer's making 74, 72, there's another $98 in overhead and management coming down on that.
Well, there's probably something less than that, maybe, you know, $40 to $50, I can't remember off the top of my head. It certainly wasn't $100 more, but it would be more than that, and that goes for all supplies, administration, supervision, data processing, your standard full cost, but at least at the $74 hour, you are paying their overtime rate, which is the rate they're paid to attend the event.
Councilmember Gardner? Mayor Protem Gardner?
There was also discussion at some point about letting events use more private security as opposed to --
Yes.
To police, I don't know what the difference in cost there is, if we're, obviously, there's a big, is it about, still a big savings?
We've encouraged those folks to, through the special event permit process, to talk with the police department about where that's an option, and Chief Johnson has been open to those kinds of things, and indeed, many groups do use more private security than they've used in the past.
I'm guessing that the 172 is the fully loaded cost of the person, fully loaded meaning salary and fringe benefits.
And overhead, probably.
Plus, police department overhead, plus general city overhead.
Could be.
And I'm guessing that's how they got to that 172 number. Now, the 74, 72, is that just the straight hourly overtime cost, or does that include fringe?
It does not include fringe, it does include special pay, so it's what we would pay them in total for salary, overtime, but it does not include a fringe benefit component at all.
Because their benefit would likely not go up based on their overtime use, so.
True.
I'm comfortable with this number, I know it's Tracy's job to look at how we deal with our finances and our revenue, but in light of all the complaints we get about this cost, I'm comfortable with the lower number in recommending that to you.
Well, I'll just, I'll just respond with my point of view on this. We're introducing a lot, we've changed a lot in the last year, we're introducing more process here, that will cause some amount of discomfort while people get used to these changes, but through it all, I think we need to have an attitude of promoting this kind of citizen involvement and energy in our community, and for that purpose, I think the lower rate is appropriate. We're not, we don't want a discouragement rate here, we want an encouragement rate for this kind of thing, because these events, by and large, well, that's the purpose of the redo, they're good for the community. So I'm in favor of the lower rate. Councilmember Selich?
Yeah, I think this is good that we're formalizing this in the way that we are, but if someone comes up with a great event that wants council's support midway through the year, is there some flexibility that they can come in on that, or are we going to relegate everyone to being locked into this annual cycle?
You, as council, always have the ability to tell me that you'd like someone considered for additional assistance in mid-year, that's, this is a council policy in effect, how we'd implement it, so that's up to you to change that and waive that if you need, if need be. Our goal, though, is to have you consider as much as possible, if not everything, in the context of one decision and one budget action.
No different than any other budget exception item that we might want to propose. Okay, Tara?
Okay. This next slide just really illustrates the impact that, that hourly rate reduction or change in hourly rate would be, it would cut their police, this is one actual event, this is actually the Toshiba Classics Police Department used for last year, and what we would propose for this coming year, if we were able to reduce that hourly rate, would cut their police bill about in half.
All right, wait a minute. The Toshiba, is that something we give money to? I didn't think so.
This was just an example of an event that goes --
Oh, but that leads to my question of, is this rate only for those that come through our particular process, or is this rate going to be for any event in the city, whether it comes through our process and we're contributing money and whatever?
Well, everyone would come through the special event permit process, but if your question is, in other words, they, they come in and they meet with the staff and say, like Toshiba, here's what we're going to be doing, they may not ask for any waiver or any sponsorship, but this is the rate we would charge them for --
Okay, so it would be for everybody?
That's right.
Right.
So clearly, there are some pros to the new process. We would work from one central pot of money, it would provide an equal opportunity for all groups to be aware of and participate in the process, equal distribution of those funds, we would hope, and easier for us to manage and control some of these costs. There are cons, too, and that is more work for our Special Events Advisory Committee. Some groups, as Councilman Selich has noted, might miss that funding cycle, and also, if we're using one pot of money, we're dividing that among all the qualifying events, and that might result in a decrease in funding for some of our events. Our next steps are, after we get your input tonight, we could place it on the next council agenda. We're also going to notify the event organizers, I have a letter ready to go tomorrow, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago, that outlines their costs from last year, projects what they could be this coming year, and covers this process, to give them a chance to not only consider their event and those pending costs, but to give us their feedback on this process. Or we can also just come back to you for further review, make some amendments, and seek your approval at a further, a later date.
Okay, that concludes your presentation. All right, any further comments, Councilmember Curry?
Well, as we move forward with this, I think it's a good idea to have a schedule. I would not be supportive of the requirement that the event be principally held within the city limits, because I think that that separates out people that we've traditionally worked with, and it's a, not an appropriate criteria. I also think the criteria on how much money goes to a charity is problematic, as many of these events are not charitably based. So with those two providers, I think the adjustment on the police fees is a good improvement, and I think the process -- and I think the process is probably well, well done, but I would not be in favor of those two points.
Other comments? Okay, I'd like to open this up for public comment then. Anyone wishing to comment on this agenda item, please step forward.
My name is Jim Mosher. I live in the Back Bay at a location where a city staff with its penchant for efficiency and firm belief that they know what is best for the public better than the public itself does, managed to approve a cell site adjacent to residential homes without public notice or review. Since, like Councilman Rosansky, I don't like the idea of government deciding what is best for us without our input, my comment, as hit, earlier one and from the city manager, is not so much about the agenda item itself, as about the way it was listed. A problem that I think is more pervasive than just this one item. In May 1998, a previous council made a conscious decision to disband the many standing committees which had previously been used to collect background information, and switched to this system of devoting a part of its regular meeting to study sessions where the entire council, along with the public, could learn about specific matters. That's a very laudable idea, provided the public knows what you're going to be talking about and can prepare to provide useful input. Some, but not all, of the early study session agendas included the few extra words needed to do this, including in many cases, the exact proposed actions, such as receive and aisle, receive and file, or direct the staff on a particular question before the council. But in the present case, the notice, as you've noted, says just special events. There was no staff report available before this afternoon, and no indication of what about special events was going to be discussed. In my view, at least, that is not really sufficient to meet even the Brown Act's minimal requirement that an interested person should be able to determine from the agenda if it is a topic they wish to monitor and take the time to participate in. The following item on tonight's, this afternoon's agenda is called Siena project. I would venture to say very few members of the public have any idea what that's going to be about. The previous agenda had topics here of fee schedule and West Newport facilities, again with no staff reports and no further explanation of what the discussion was going to be about. I would submit that intentionally or not, agenda listings of this sort do not promote government of the people and by the people. Instead, they promote a government of and by the few insiders who know what these code words mean. I would humbly suggest that a greater effort be put into preparing study session agendas that are intelligible enough to encourage useful public input, as well as making the staff reports, if there are any, available on the public website as soon as they become available, as the fine print at the bottom of the agenda suggests you already do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be.
Council, Mayor Protem Gardner?
I agree. I think we can do a better job, and that's, that, you know, that one of the, the.
Every two.
The downfalls of, of doing something like this is you get so knowledgeable about these things that it's like acronyms, and you throw them around and you forget that other people don't know. So, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion to be more explicit about what this actually means, so that people who aren't following this breathlessly every moment will have some clue.
Including the distribution of reports ahead of time.
Yeah, actually, that was coming to my point. I would agree with both of them, and quite honestly, I don't know what the Siena project is either, and I was wondering myself, so. I, I mean, I remember a time when we used to get a staff report with the study session items, and it seems like more and more, we don't get that, and we need to move back to the, I think, the former situation. I mean, I got Tara's report, when did you send it out? Last night? I mean, if I didn't have a chance to read my email this morning, I wouldn't have even known about any of this stuff, so. Really need to do a better job, especially now that we're going to this Thursday deal and it's supposed to streamline everything, I should, I think all the reports should be on Thursday, not just regular agenda, okay?
Yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Okay, do we have further public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do we have any further council comments? I don't see any. Dave, do you feel like you have adequate guidance here?
I guess I would like a sense from the council as to when you're ready to act on this, and whether you would want an additional opportunity without a specific action at the next, at a, at a future meeting or another study session that's more robust in terms of, of how we report it and who we invite. Because I, I really respect what's been said, and I don't want to surprise any of our good special event folks, including, I'd note that when we talk about what good to great, one of the key, one of the, the third thing we identified is that we need to support this community and its interest in being engaged in community events, so it's important to us, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would make one more comment back on the financial thing. I mean, I agree of those, I don't know how to define it in technical terms, but of those entities that we know and understand, you know, I would think that before we gave a grant of any significant amount, that we'd want to see the financials for that event. I mean, I almost think that's a given. If, if a brand-new operation rolls into town that we've never been involved with, and they come in with the most incredible thing that we've ever seen, and they want $100,000 from us, you know, I don't know how we even discuss that with, without beginning to understand what that organization is. And so somehow or another, I think we have to craft some very careful language that, that would maybe give the city the right, or the committee, the right to review the, the financial condition or the stability or something before we would be writing out a check, and then, should we have something in this? I mean, now that we're going blanket with this, I mean, do we need to have something about distribution? I mean, does someone come into town and, and says, you know, six months from now, I'm going to do ABC, and it's great, and we say, boy, it is great, here's $50,000, and we never see them again? You know, so what about the distribution of the money? Now that we're going formal on this, it seems to me that we need a little more meat on it than what we're talking about.
It seems, it seems that we could accomplish your purpose by putting in that additional requirement for first-time applicants, and then for people that have been through, that we've had an event and we have history that we can look at in terms of the event itself would be adequate.
Well, when they fill out the application, I mean, don't we ask some of this stuff? I mean, I don't remember what the application looked like, we had it at one point, but I assume we're asking a lot of information about the event, how they're budgeting, what the costs are.
We do.
I mean, it's not like.
We also have.
Just handing them $50,000 because they said that it's a great event.
We also have a report back process as to what you did with the money.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this is already taken up in the application process now.
For the SEAC, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if I would, no, I'm sorry, I hear, got you.
No, no, I was. I was.
I was just, I have a concern, though, about not being able, just because it's not a first-time event planner, that we hear things about, say, a nonprofit that's doing something here. You know, yeah, they're really shaky, their, their finances are really in, in trouble, and not to be able to have some way of getting some assurance that they actually do, even though they've done it several years, that they do have the wherewithal to do it. And again, I understand the concern that we don't want to be burdening everybody with all sorts of financial reports, but I do think we need some protection, some, some, enough flexibility in the language that we can protect the city in, in situations.
I guess I'm swayed in that direction, too.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Curry brought up a couple of issues that others haven't commented on, that we, I, I think, I kind of, there, there was no plot to exclude any, anyone, certainly, but I get, I am inclined to, to go with what you said, but I'd like to hear what others said about.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with his comments, yeah.
Okay, so it addressed the principally within city limits, that we take that out, and then we, Mr. Curry's other point was about not the 20 percent of the event gross going to, must be donated to a nonprofit, that, is my characterization that that would come out, too.
I mean, maybe, maybe the principally within could be substituted with some language like, have a primary focus, or. Well, significantly connected to the city of Newport Beach. I mean, certainly Newport and Ensenada Race, it starts in Newport Beach, and.
It's half.
Yeah, it's half. What was the other one you mentioned?
Orange County Marathon.
Yeah, I mean, that does, well, it has originated in Newport Beach, I don't know how their, what their next year's plan is.
They're sure they're in.
They're, okay, so I mean, it, it has to, I would, well, I would think it has to have a significant connection to the city. I mean, I wouldn't want to just donate money that had no connection to the city, or certainly not give them equal standing as others that do have a connection, but I don't know that it has to take place primarily within the city, just has a significant connection to the city.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
I would agree with that, but I wanted to clarify something that, that Councilman Curry said. The initial language was 20 percent would go to a charity, and then I think Councilman Hill suggested it would be a nonprofit.
Somebody.
Somebody, anyway, that, that many, most of these organizations are nonprofits, so that if the 20 percent went to them, so if we change the language to nonprofit.
Yes.
But are you excluding, I just wanted, are you excluding both, or were you making that decision?
Well, yeah, because some organizations, some of these events are designed to put on the event, they're not designed to raise money one way or the other, and this advantages people who are organized under a particular set of laws against those who are organized under a different set of laws, even though they may be pursuing the same purpose. Because what we're saying is, because you're a qualified nonprofit, paying yourself meets the charitable goal, whereas if you were organized as a corporation or an LLC or something, paying yourself under the very same circumstances would, would not meet the goal. So I just think it's problematic in terms of, of its application.
That I, excuse me, just one minute, let's see if I can follow up on that. We do have an application, though, one of the criteria is sort of the benefit to the community, so we are covering that in some ways, even though we're not doing specific dollar amounts.
Well, I think we also need to appreciate that a lot of event efforts can be on the verge of insolvency, but they can still pull off a great event, and, you know, and after the event happens, they may be flat broke, and that's what event planning is. It's not a, you know, and they're not building a nest egg, it's a, you know, it's just a thrust to get an event done, and they get their event done, and then they're, they're through to the next year.
And they start from scratch the next year.
Right, yeah.
Right. And some, like, for instance, I have some experience with the triathlon down in Crystal Cove, and some years, you know, they get a lot of participation, and they have extra money, and I know they've donated that money to Boy Scouts, to the UC Irvine, to Qua, I mean, to a lot of groups have benefited. And then some years, they don't get a lot of participation, and they have just enough money to cover their expenses, so does that mean that next year we don't fund them because, you know, they, unfortunately, it was an off year or something happened that, you know.
I was thinking more in the terms of, of a nonprofit where they have staff. I mean, most of these organizations don't really have staff, but the staff would be suddenly, all of a sudden, the money we're, we're donating is going to pay staff salaries rather than to the event or something, and that would be a concern, I would think, to the city.
Well.
Not, not that, I, I understand, though, that most of them, you know, particularly with a lot of volunteers, you don't end up with the budget for, or, or savings, but I was, so that was what I was thinking, was more of a, a more formalized organization.
But I, I would beg the issue that you can't go there, because sometimes paying the staff is what you want to do so the event happens. So it's, you're caught no matter, I think it comes back to, if you know the entity and you feel comfortable with the entity, that's the way we've operated. If we have a stranger walking to town, then we need some ability to evaluate that stranger before we would do something.
And, and let's not forget, we do have an initial hurdle here, where we've got a special events advisory committee that is composed of people who are familiar with these kinds of things, that are running the traps, if you will, on the organization and the event, et cetera, so I guess I'm, I'm less, feeling less need to have that requirement in, and more in concert with Councilmember Curry.
Okay, I think I get a sense of the council on that. Tara, you, too?
Okay. We never answered your question, though, about another study session, we're just bringing it back to council.
If I had my druthers, we would get this going earlier rather than later, and, and put it on a regular session for the 22nd, but invite, as Tara's saying, everybody to that meeting in, in a letter tomorrow. But that may be too early and not communicative enough, so I, again, sorry to indulge you once more, but an alternative would be to have another study session and invite them and say, this is what we're proposing, can you come to the study session and comment, and then we'd serve it up one meeting later for the nighttime session.
Or that same night.
Or that same night.
It would have been a whole lot easier just to invite them today, and then we would have been, one and done, but now, now we.
But we didn't, so.
Yeah.
So what, what, what's the sense of council here? Do we want to go straight to a, an agenda item on the 22nd, have a study session and an agenda item on the 22nd, or kick it farther?
I'm happy to go straight to the regular agenda, like Dave said.
I'm a regular kind of guy, too.
We will aggressively get the word out, though. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I think we'll move on then to the Siena project, and I'm sure we'll start with an explanation of what that is.
I will start to introduce that, and actually, that means folks haven't been listening to Mayor Protem Gardner talk about the Siena project. I, I believe we have, yeah, Dave Webb and, from Public Works about this, and I'll let you explain what it is.
Thank you, and my deepest apologies, I broke one of my rules, and I, I didn't get this out in time, so I've given you a hand out here, and we'll talk a little bit about that, but we'll be much better about getting it out in time for the public. It is a word, it's not a code word for some kind of missile factory or something, or actually, Siena in Spanish means spring or marshy area, so that can kind of lead you to where we're heading with this, but if I could get the lights and we'll talk more about. And where Siena gets leads into is, what I want to talk about is our selenium mitigation program, and, and again, these are probably terms that you haven't seen for a while or ever, so we'll go right into that. Selenium, selenium is an element in the water quality world that we've been addressing of late. Selenium is a naturally occurring element that happens to be very rare, as I find out, but unfortunately, in our area, we have an abundance of it. It's a, an essential element for all animals, we use it as a nutrient, and a lot of plants uptake the selenium they need for their process. But the thing about selenium is, we need a little bit of it, you'll find it in your multivitamins, but if you get too much of it, it's toxic, and, and that's where we have some problems. Selenium is actually on the periodic table over here, if you're interested, it's number 34, you might like that fact. Selenium is found in our, our naturally occurring ground areas around here, the Monterey Foundations, and it's mobilized through, basically, the hydraulic cycle. And what we have is, we have rainwater that's falling on the ground, we have unlined ponds that are generating, we have water systems that are leaking underground, pressurized systems, we have irrigation, sorry, irrigation that's falling on the ground and working its way through, and then it ends up going through the ground, leaching into our storm drain systems, into our channel, and that's how it's mobilized and moves through our system into the bay. And the concerns we have about that is then its uptake by the critters, the animals, the smaller animals which are fed on by the larger animals, and in higher levels, again, toxic, you could have deformities, problems with bird eggs, amphibians, things like that, so there is a lot of concern in that, and we've spent a lot of time focusing on that. In Orange County, and particularly central Orange County.
When you say you've spent a lot of time focusing on that, what do you mean by that?
Well, for several years now, there's been working groups on this with the regional board and the Orange County, and there's a group of cities, particularly Tustin, Orange, Foot, I'm, I'm sorry, Lake Forest, and Laguna Hills, Irvine, also a couple of partners, the Irvine Companies in this, Lennar Homes, along with our city.
This isn't something that that group said, let's talk about selenium, this is something that the regional board came and said, you will deal with it, so.
Right, but I, I think the point that I wanted to address is what I've been hearing from the, members of the scientific community, is that the data that's being sort of used as backup for these types of, you know, concentrations or dangers or so on, that the data is stale. So when you say we're making an effort, what, what effort has been made to really challenge their data?
Well, that's why we're having this particular thing, because we agree, and we're concerned because there's some decisions that need to be made quickly, and I didn't want to just do it on my own, I wanted the council to be aware of some of these things that are coming up.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking to clarify what efforts really have been made, have we challenged the data to this point?
We've had a lot of discussions about the data, one with the EPA level set, what level we should apply to our, our mitigation programs. Is it really valid? We've heard comments like, I don't see any three-legged frogs and various things, do we really have a problem? There's been a lot of discussion on that, and we don't, I don't know if we really have our hands on that, the regional board's still trying to, to put their arms around that. EPA is also forcing some limits on us, so we'll get into that, I have a compliance slide, and I'll kind of touch on that, too, if you like. Just for background, though, the, I'm sorry, back one. The Siena plant we're talking about is located right here off Abronca, and this is Peters Canyon Wash coming down, and then San Diego Creek comes down through here, and right about at the confluence, there is this plant they're locating. These circle areas are kind of the identified hotspots where the selenium is really showing itself. We have one over here in Big Canyon, this is over in the San Ana area, and then. This is over in the San Ana area, and then mainly in central Irvine and coming out of Tustin, we have some really high levels. We have groundwater perking up, leaching into our channels and coming down. So the goal, again, would be maybe to capture it in a plant called Sienega, and I'll get into that.
What does that green represent?
This green is the historic area of what they call the swamp of the frogs. It was prior to the San Diego Creek being cut through and going into the bay. It used to basically drain out of the foothills, go into that green area and pond, and a lot of it would evaporate on very, very high levels of flow. It breached the top and come into the bay. So over thousands and thousands.
So is that the Indian name for Irvine?
Could be. But again, yet, that's probably why you have so much bioaccumulation in that area, just because it used to settle in there and drop out. It does precipitate out of the water as it settles. There's, with the regional board, we talked a little bit with Lesley on this, is that we're being forced to look at this problem. There's a couple of options we're working on that we've worked with them and kind of looked for some flexibility on. The first option here is that they're looking at doing a comprehensive watershed program. And this is more looking at, instead of just at the point of the pipe, specific levels of treatment, what if we go on a more comprehensive level throughout the whole area? And what we're coming around is basically developing a best management practice, specific plan for this, on how we would treat selenium in this area and other nutrients, but particularly in this case, selenium. And Sienega would be one of those BMPs in that. They're looking at a fifteen-year compliance window to bring that into where they'd like our levels at. We would be basically treating, San Diego Creek is one of our areas. And they're looking at very low levels, five to twelve parts per million, that's a very low level, and that's some of the, billion. That's a very low level. And that's some of the science, too, where are those levels set? In Big Canyon, for instance, they're looking at setting that one PPM, and that's, that's very low. We're not even sure if we can achieve that. But the reason is, they think that selenium levels are so high in there, we have some very hot hits in the Big Canyon area that they need to bring that down, so they're looking at setting a very low level on that. Again, in this suite of BMPs, one of them would be to build the Sienega plant. And then with that, there's a bunch of other treatments proposed over the fifteen-year period in the swamp of the frog area. The total package right now, and again, here's another area we haven't nailed down, the cost has gone from fifty million to one hundred and fifty million. And this is to be, proposed to be shared by all the partners. Very high numbers, obviously in these times, too, giving people a lot of difficulty in comprehending where the money would come from on that. So this is where we've been working with the board. The other option is, if we didn't do this.
Does that number include the Big Canyon as well as the Sienega?
Yes, it does have that in there. The other option is basically a compliance in numerical limits. And that's the traditional way the board would do it, and they'd say, go meet this limit, go fix that problem at that point. The problem with that is that we would be immediately subject to that. And it'd be basically anywhere in the watershed, we'd have to meet this limit. And the limit they're looking at is five parts per billion. And that, again, is a very low level, and that would be treated at any point of pipe, any place we're having an outfall. They'd look to see if we can meet that. If not, we're subject to fines, we're subject to all the other things that the regional board brings with us. In this case, we're looking at maybe seven to ten million just for us, and that's primary in the Big Canyon area. Because that's the only place we're really seeing the selenium. We wouldn't be working in Irvine and others on a cooperative basis.
What's the parts per billion in Big Canyon?
It ranges, it's been as high as a hundred, and in the fifties, various areas are different. I actually put in a Big Canyon slide, I thought you might want to see that, so I added some information there, and I'll go through so you can understand some of the background on Big Canyon.
Sort of big case they always cite, I don't recall it, but what were the sort of the parts per billion up there?
Kesterson, I believe it was. And I don't know, they're very high, they're actually calling, there were some real effects on wildlife immediate. They could see that, they had a lot of bird issues, and I'm sure it's in the very high range of seventies to a hundred. They actually shut the reservoir down, as I understand, and hadn't drained it, it was such a problem up there, Central Valley area. So where we're going with this is, in this suite, we mentioned Sienega. And Sienega is basically a treatment plant for the low-flow storm water. And this is just a rendering of it, it's on Branca, it's up in Irvine. This picture is basically the above-ground facilities, and it's on school district property. And most of the facility is actually underground. It goes through various medias down below the ground. We pump it out of the channel, run it through the plant, and basically clean it up and then dump it back into the channel. The AB MET system is a GE product, and that's the proposed mechanism they want to use to clean it. It's more of a, like a resin filter, as I understand it, through your, like your water purification. And it precipitates out this selenium in there. What they're looking at is inflows of the creek at anywhere from thirty to a hundred and twenty parts per billion. They're going to take that flow, and there's about twelve CFS in the creek right now, and divert three CFS of that. It'll run through the process, treat it down to a level of about nine parts per billion. And then that'll be put back in the creek blended, and we'll have a lower level, which is, will technically be in compliance. Some of the other things they've found in the treatment process is they have other constituents being removed. Arsenic, seventy percent, bacteria, copper, the percentages on there. Nitrites and zinc are all removed in this process. All those are beneficial to our water body, because this water ultimately ends up in the upper bay and then the lower bay.
So is the nine parts per billion the blended rate, or is that the treated?
That's the treated rate coming out, and that would be put into the creek.
So what does the thirty to a hundred and twenty get blended down to, when you throw the nine?
As I understand it, it meets compliance would be at least twelve, I'm sorry, at least, yeah, twelve is the limit we're looking at right now. Could be as low as five. That's, again, some of the science and some of the math going into the plan.
If you point five percent of the flow reduces to nine parts per billion and mixed with the rest of the thirty to a hundred and twenty, and you're going to get to twelve?
Yeah, that's not going to, that's not going to happen.
That's, that's not going to happen, that might be wrong. That's the numbers that we provided. I don't have the exact math behind that, they went through a little larger description when I got this. But the goal would be to basically put it back in the creek and come into compliance at that point. And then it mixes with San Diego Creek. San Diego Creek, I'm sorry, also has a lower level of it. And I think part of the science is that when it mixes right there with San Diego, this is the Peters Canyon Wash flows, when it mixes with San Diego, the overall level meets compliance.
It sounds like it's more the classic sort of old-school solution to pollution, which is dilution. Have you other, other possibilities, such as moving it, or?
There's a number of things that have been looked at, including diversions into the sewer system. And also, if we're going to treat it, somehow getting it connected to the groundwater replenishment system, so we'd get a double bang for our buck there. But the main thing is, which you'll get into, but the reason I really wanted it now was, we're going to be, Irvine Ranch Water District wants to move ahead with this project. And they're having their board meeting next week, and they're, we had a very testy meeting of the Newport Bay Executive Committee, in which they basically said, you know, y'all got to, all got to step up, and you got to tell us by that date. And I think it's the feeling of a number of us that it's just too soon to make that kind of commitment, because we don't like the science, and we haven't, even if we haven't been able to persuade the regional board, that we have a lot of questions about it.
Well, I haven't heard the full story, but from what I've heard so far, I think you need to go in there and push back.
Well, and actually, this next slide will demonstrate that, as Nancy was alluding to. Right now, the construction estimate costs for the Sienega plant are anywhere from twenty-two to thirty million dollars. And that price has been ranging, depending on some negotiation with the school district, and how much they're going to treat, how much they're going to divert. IRWD has gotten a five-point-five million dollar grant from the Bureau of Reclamation, a federal grant, which they're willing to contribute to it as the twenty-five percent match. The rest they're looking for to come from the funding partners, we, the cities, and the Irvine Company. They've also said, if we put in this match, we'll build the plant, we'll operate and maintain the plant in perpetuity. But you cities need to come up with a differential in the construction cost there, and therein lies the rub. We've talked about many scenarios now on how to do this, anywhere from land area, population percentages proportional. We even talked about benefits, who's the beneficker, who's the contributor to it? All of that ranges in cost from, where it comes from two-hundred-and-fifty to one-point-five million. The two-hundred-and-fifty is a position staff put on the table as the partners. We want to be a partner in the position, we want to help, it's a good thing for the bay. But we're not looking at funding the whole freight of this and trying technically to say, you know what? What we'd like to do, if you're going to build Sienega, we also have to think about Big Canyon. If we're going to be a partnership, maybe we ought to all share in that cost, too. That hasn't floated to date with everybody, they're already struggling how they're going to pay for Sienega and not take on Big Canyon also. So if you look from the far end, one-point-five million would be basically us paying about six percent into the plant. And the two-point-five is what we put on, saying, if we can't get contributions to Big Canyon, then we're willing to basically put in about one percent. We want to be a partner, we want to be moving the plant forward, but we're going to have to cover our own costs in Big Canyon, it sounds like, on our own. So that's where those numbers.
And there's another issue that we had a long conversation with the regional board, David and David and I, that we said, okay, if we do spend this kind of money, we back off. Will you say, okay, you've taken care of it, we'll give you a, the slip that says it's okay for fifteen, twenty years while we deal with other things? And they won't, they'll say, no, because we, there's more selenium. So we could go forward with this and still get hit with who knows how many more demands to be treating the selenium. So that was, that's another issue that we have been pushing back on, because we don't think that's, we can't get the, any kind of guarantee that this is going to really make a difference, and we're certainly not going to want to spend that kind of money.
There's just an open checkbook still with the regional board. You do this, we're still not going to necessarily let you off the hook for other areas. So the cities have not been able to commit to that. We'd like a little more assurance. And again, this is to Councilmember Deagles, we've been pushing them on that, we've been holding, they've been working with us for months on these deals. And the cities are basically saying, one, we're in very bad economic times, if we could even do this. Two, we need some assurances, we need to find other ways to pay for this, we've looked at some of the Measure M options. We need to also have a little more timeframe in saying, if we do build this, you're going to give us some grace, basically, before you hit us with the next one. So that's Sienega, and I'm going to go through Big Canyon real quick, if you like, just kind of bring in on that one, and then we can talk a little bit more if you have some questions. Big Canyon, you're very familiar with the area, but basically down here at the upper bay, Big Canyon runs up. It goes through the country club and the golf course here, and runs up here. We have a little nature area through here, and it starts up in the high parts of the hills here. This is our reservoir here, Big Canyon reservoir. And the selenium hotspots that we found through testing in this is basically coming from the bottom of the reservoir. We have underdrains on that, and we've tested the underdrain water, and it's very hot. We have some up in the port streets here that are very hot. And we also have some problems with the lakes and the golf course, we understand. As the selenium goes through and basically slows down, is what they say, they need real slow water causes it to change forms from salinate to selenite, and then it precipitates out, and it becomes more bioavailable for the critters. So they're real concerned with real slow-moving water or lakes. So with that, trying to solve the Big Canyon question, knowing it's coming our way, staff's been working on various functions. And one of the approaches we're looking at is, at the reservoir and some of the hotspots, we'd like to try to maybe work with the Orange County Sanitation District to do some immediate diversions. That would knock the levels down significantly, and also the low flows. So that's one area we're working on right now. Also eliminating some of the slow water up in the nature area, they're right below the Big Canyon reservoir, maybe cleaning that up a little bit so the water moves a little better, doesn't stagnate in that area. I noted the revenue sources here, we could use sewer funds, basically, for the diversions. We have one-point-five million contribution from the Irvine Company we could use maybe towards some of the stagnation and the water issues. The other one is to continue with our reduction in overwatering. We have an ongoing program, we've been working on that for years. We also just applied for, you'll see there, for a grant from the Bureau, basically, for six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars to go more towards replacing some of the turf out there with maybe artificial turf, also new controllers and things to reduce that irrigation. That's a big component, because the less water that's coming down, the less we treat.
Is there a management alternative to the golf courses? Because they're not going to, Big Canyon's not going to want to get rid of the lakes.
No, and we wouldn't want to get rid of the lakes. Some of the preliminary thoughts is maybe taking the low flow around the lakes in a pipe, and then they could still have a standing lake, and it could still act as a drainage solution for large storms. But maybe they're just putting some regular recycled water back in to keep them full, but they're not using the creek to flow through them anymore. That might solve the problem, at least in the lakes, maybe lining. We have to go a little bit further, and we haven't talked too much about that with them yet. We're just kind of looking at some of the options. But I think we have a solution where they can keep their lakes. We're also going to do enhanced monitoring, field monitoring, obviously, seeing if we can knock down these levels to something that's reasonable. Again, I caution, one part per billion is very low, and we've kind of told the board, there's no way we're going to achieve that. It's, it's something we'll go for, but we just want to put you on record on that, so we're not hit with the fines later on that. At the very end, though, we might be forced to do some kind of treatment as the flow comes down through the canyon, hits Jamboree, and prior to going into the bay, we might have to do something like a mini Sienega plant, maybe a bioreactor, or maybe some kind of underground wetlands, which is basically a lot of rock that's underground where the water moves through it, and you have some precipitation going on there. The other thing maybe we could do is a sewer diversion there and clean up the low flow completely and take it in at that point. Again, we have some funding that might be able to help with that, but those would be later on down the road, if we didn't have a lot of success with the upstream.
Do you have an idea of what percentage of the problem is coming from our reservoir?
I don't have exact numbers, it's, it is a, gosh, it'd be in the maybe ten percent or something, just flow-wise, low flow. And that comes from the cemetery above and kind of comes under the reservoir. So that might take care of a little bit, maybe the port streets. Again, the other thing is, do we have the capacity in the sewer to take this water and put it in there? So we have some things we still need to look into. Big Canyon's potential cost, looking at all these options, is anywhere from five to seven million dollars. And again, I relate that back, it ties into Sienega, because if we're going to stand alone on Big Canyon as a city, and that's where Nancy and Mr. Kiff and I have talked about, maybe we're going to contribute little to Sienega, and the rest of the partners fund that, and we'll be over here. If we get some partnership on Big Canyon or some relief, maybe we can contribute more to Sienega. So those are some of the issues behind it, as Councilmember Gardner talked about right now. The Irvine Company, I'm sorry, IRWD is looking for some answers from cities, they'd like to see if the partners are going to step up. I do know talking to city colleagues, and you can read about it and hear about it from your colleagues. I mean, finances are tough right now, I don't know where Costa Mesa and Irvine are, Irvine's got the money, but San Ana, some of the partners just don't have that kind of money to step up right now.
I just, so anyway, the one thing I want out of this, obviously, some awareness, but to be, if you're comfortable that we are not leaping into the Sienega, and that we're just going to take our time, and if we miss that particular window, well, we'll continue to deal with the problem. But we have been assured by the IRWD that they can use the grant for other purposes. So it's not like we're throwing the money away, although it wouldn't come to this process. So that's mainly what I'd like to come out of today, as well as obviously the knowledge and the assurance that we'll continue to struggle with this and continue to push back against this. And I know Dr. Skinner's in the audience, and he'll probably have some things to tell us, too.
Councilmember Selich?
Well, I agree with what Nancy just said, I think we ought to be real careful about this. It seems that those upstream cities, they, we get all the problems down here, but they never want to contribute for all the different things that are going on, or very difficult to get them to contribute. And so here's something where they're wanting us to come upstream and help them on something that they don't want to come downstream and help us, it just doesn't make any sense.
There has been a lot of mutual contributions. I know in the sediment program, they have all been for years contributing to the solution in sediment. Irvine's willing to put a lot of money into the program, IRWD. So, but some of it's financially, just, they don't have the money available. I think that if we could, if we all had access to money, maybe this would be a good solution. It does help the bay, and if we could maybe fund some of that, that'd be a good thing, but.
So a question that I have, though, is, so we don't play ball, we do, we do, you know, sort of hang tough here. What's, what is the risk that there's going to be some over-the-top mandate come down on us that we have no control of, that could be very large? I mean, what's the downside of, you know, being difficult here?
As I understand it, it would be right into option two, we'd go right into numerical limits with the board. They'd go into the enforcement side and say, thou shall start treating for selenium, and you'll hit this level at all points. It'll take a while, they'll need to go to each city, set those limits, set up the program, set up a monitoring program. I don't know if we'd be the biggest benefit there. The cooperative side looks real nice, it's just, again, it's a big nut to crack all at once. Having more time makes it more palatable, folks.
The Water Quality Control Board, I mean, they're like the Coastal Commission, they can do what they want so we can solve all these problems, and they'll come up with a whole another set of problems to solve. So it just keeps on coming, so that risk is always going to be there.
Councilmember Curry?
Yeah, the Measure M program provides funds for remediating vehicular runoff in the water. Now, obviously, selenium doesn't come from vehicles. But in the process of using or thinking about using those funds to deal with particulate runoff and things like that, can that be combined with a strategy for selenium to help co-share some of those costs?
We've actually talked about that, and it could be a solution. We have to get past the transportation nexus. We have various folks that sit on that committee and say, we can probably look at that. But there are other cities, obviously, going to say, wait a minute, it is, it's a natural clean element, it has nothing to do with transportation. But there are other things, as the plan is removing copper metals and things like that, that maybe we can form a nexus and get some grant funding there.
Councilwoman Deagle?
Is IRWD under pressure as far as any of their NPDS permits or anything like that?
I don't know that.
Okay, so it's more they have a grant and they want to fund it, or where are they coming from?
If I had to guess, they're not one of the funding partners, they're doing this because they're in kind of the storm water treatment side right now. They're doing their natural treatment systems and others. I think this is a good service for them, but they're not called out on the TM Dale as one of the folks to do that. That's one of the questions that the partners have brought up, because they produce water and they have wells and things to discharge, so.
Well, it seems because the point was made with the agencies, you know, you give them ten million for a project, and then they come back and they want another twenty million. So the, you know, you're endlessly put over the barrel for fun- million, so the, you know, you're endlessly put over the barrel for funding and they're, with sort of no cap on it. And it seems as if what, uh, we may wanna consider doing is, is, uh, settling what the standards are and what are truly, coming to some agreement as to what are truly dangerous levels of dangerous concentrations. So I, I don't know if we've given any thought to, um, retaining any consultant services, where we have someone who's both scientifically literate and has advocacy skills with the board. Um, I, I don't know if you've considered doing that at all, or?
Actually, the counties are lead, and they've done a lot of that.
Okay.
They've hiberned consultants, and there's, there's been several scientists looking at this. Um, again, part of the consensus is, I don't know if they have enough data to say where this limit should be.
Right, okay.
If it's really a problem.
Well, in the short term, I don't favor, uh, giving any money at this point. If you're looking for feedback, I think that's your question you're here today to have a response to.
Okay, Councilman Hill?
Will technology play a role in this? Is there a learning curve or exponential curve that's going on?
Uh, technology surely will. The whole AB MET system is something that's evolved as part of the technology. Uh, I, I can imagine in the future, there'll be more. That was one of the constraints, though, and we pointed out to the regional board. There is no real defined process for treating selenium like you would other constituents' trash and things like that. So part of it is trying to regulate something where we really don't know how to exactly treat for it, unless we're very expensive systems.
One more question, if I may. I know government is often not very logical, um, but, uh, why would they be spending all these millions and millions of dollars to treat something to nine parts per billion when they say their requirement is five?
Part of it is that, that selenium is site-specific, so they can make some adjustments. But one of the real frustrations has been, is that we haven't seen the impact. I mean, they're doing tissue samples and everything, and so we say, "Well, we're not seeing the, you know, the two heads, or the four legs, or the whatever." And the response we get is, "Well, it can affect the reproductive rate," which is something so squishy, uh, I mean, you'd have to study it for so many years, when we'd have to start right now with a, with the baseline and everything. So it's, it's, it's very difficult to, to, to deal with, because it's, a lot of it is squishy, and, and the data shifts.
Okay, well, we've certainly generated some conversation about this one. Um, let's see if we have some conversation from the public. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this, please step up. Dr. Skinner?
I think I, I think I know you all, so, Jack Skinner, and I'm from Newport Beach. Uh, I've been a Back Bay advocate for a lot of years, and, uh, this selenium issue, uh, has bothered me greatly. Uh, first of all, I was involved about eight years ago and, and actually contacted Fish and Wildlife to determine what their concerns were and why. And, uh, at that time, they prevented, presented some evidence that they thought that this was, uh, important for protection of Newport Bay, uh, and the wildlife in Newport Bay. Since then, uh, there's been a lot of money spent on consultants and by, uh, other agencies to try to get a different standard, uh, from the national standard set for this watershed. And this is where a lot of the money has been going. It's like a deep hole. The consultants, uh, run study and study, more studies all the time, they come up with little different answers, uh, and they wanna study it further, and that's where, uh, they came up with that price tag that just, uh, turned me around on this issue totally, when they said, "It's gonna cost a hundred million dollars to solve this selenium problem." And as Nancy said, there's not, uh, a, a lot of evidence that there's, uh, abnormalities in these birds that are classical of selenium toxicity. Uh, one of the interesting things that happened just recently is that the regional board has backed off Newport Bay as impacted enough to call it on the three-oh-three-D list. And the reason is that saltwater standards for selenium are much more lenient than freshwater standards. And so the regional board, I think, has concluded that, you know, they're not gonna be able to, to hold Newport Beach to this issue, uh, on, on the saltwater issue and the effects on the birds in the bay. Uh, this whole effort now in selenium is shrinking, as far as the regional board requirements are, into freshwater areas in the watershed, uh, like, uh, the Irvine Marsh and, uh, IRWD Marsh and some of the tributaries. But in reality, the Newport Beach is, I thought, gonna, uh, have a less important stake in this fight because, uh, of the recent decision, uh, and that is not common knowledge, but Newport Bay's gonna be taken off the three-oh-three-D list, because there's no way that, uh, they're gonna change national saltwater standards, which are much more lenient, uh, and they've decided, uh, the regional board, I think, has decided they can't win that fight. I, I, I've changed sides on this issue when I saw the price tag, and it's just what you all were talking about. And it really makes me uncomfortable that, uh, uh, in the past, there's been mutual efforts by the regional partners, supposedly, to deal with the threats to Newport Bay through the TMDL process, and that all cities in the watershed would participate. By far, the biggest problem has been, uh, sediment that's coming down into the bay. Lake Forest has begged the watershed partners to help pay for remediation of that for the last ten years, but the partners, including the Irvine Company, uh, City of Irvine, all of those people, have not come forth with any support and funding for the major threat to the bay, uh, the sediment that's mainly coming from Lake Forest and reaching our bay. And so that's why, at these meetings, you see, uh, the representative, uh, from, uh, Lake Forest say, "Why should I support you? Because you have never supported us and helped us with a problem that's even priority number one on the list." It's interesting that when it gets down to asking for your money, uh, that money's hard to come by. Well, I, I, I'm really come to the, the feeling that selenium is becoming such a problem, not only here, up at Malibu now. They're finding that selenium is a big problem in Malibu, and actually, this rock formation where the selenium has been leached out for millennia, uh, is all up and down the coast. It, it goes clear towards Sandy, uh, San Francisco and down, uh, clear down to Dana Point and farther south. And so if we test any of the streams in these areas, uh, of, of where there's some groundwater, they're all gonna be hi, high in selenium, and we're gonna be faced with this regulation, uh, whether it's, uh, a little bit, uh, like, uh, at, uh, Little Corona Beach with the, if you test that water for selenium, I'm sure it's very high.
Doc, Doc, Dr. Skinner, uh, your time has expired here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you have a summary recommendation to us that you wanted to convey?
I just wanted to bring to you the fact that, uh, the regional board has changed their standards, uh, as it really affects Newport Beach, and they haven't made it public yet, and I think this committee oughta know that it's being taken off, their plan is to take it off the three-oh-three-D list.
Okay.
Which makes, uh, Newport part in this fight less. Uh, and we know about Big Canyon, and it was well explained.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any further comments from council? Uh, Dave, uh, does the council's consensus seem clear to you on this?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we are done with this item, and, um, we will be adjourning shortly to closed session, but before we do that, I'd like to call for public comments on non-agenda items or, uh, on closed-session items. Do we have any public comment?
Uh, my name is Jim Mosher. I live on the Back Bay, where I incidentally have a picture-perfect view of the San Diego Creek, and I've never seen any selenium coming out of it. Uh, and this is a combined comment on two of the closed-session items, so if I go slightly over five minutes, I don't think I will. I hope I'm not cut off. Uh, with regard to the closed session, I would like to remind you that the Brown Act requires not just the invitation for the, to the public to comment on the closed-session topics, but also an oral announcement of what those topics will be. Uh, that's particularly important because the closed-session topics are not listed on the yellow agenda for the study session which we're currently attending. I'd also like to point out that this is the fifth time this year that the employee performance evaluations have been, of the city manager and city clerk have been listed as closed-session topics. Although the Brown Act would seem to allow this, it certainly doesn't require it, and I would think having so many evaluations of these two employees inadvertently or not creates the impression you're having some kind of embarrassing disciplinary problem with them, uh, which I think is unfair to them. If instead, if you are using the closed sessions to discuss the general operation of the branches of government that those two individuals oversee, I don't see a justification for holding those meetings behind closed doors. However, since you have invited comment on the job performance of the city manager and the city clerk, I would observe, with respect to the city manager, that on March first, uh, the city website announced with some pride the launching of the new community development department combining the former building and planning departments, which now apparently have been demoted to divisions. Uh, as I explained before, at least to me, the pride in this accomplishment is somewhat diminished by its being premature, and also it's being rather poorly implemented on the city website. Uh, since one of the city manager's duties is to see that the charter is enforced, I believe he should have known that under our charter, only the council has the power to change the structure of the government, and then only by ordinance. Uh, if he felt changes were needed, he should have approached you and asked you to take the legal steps necessary to put the desired structure in place, and only then begin to implement it. Instead, I believe we have had a community development director since at least last October, uh, but have yet to see the ordinance creating and defining that position, or many others in our present government. Regarding the performance of the city clerk, uh, I would like to remind you again that in the fall election, at her request, uh, the city went from a rather free-form and vaguely-defined system of publishing ordinances in the local paper to a very strict one that is now based on state law. Among the new requirements is the preparation and publication of fair and impartial analysis of the effects of each new ordinance. Although the clerk does a commendable job of summarizing the comments that are made during public meetings, summarizing the effects of laws is not, nor should it be, one of her long suits. I could read you these recent announcements from the January twenty-ninth daily pilot of new ordinances, uh, but suffice it to say, they recite all of the findings that led up to the enactment of the ordinances, but give no clue as to what the ordinance actually does. So I would again suggest that the city attorney, as he prepares the ordinances, uh, think about preparing a summary of them, both for publication by the clerk and for your own benefit. I think that would help the clerk do a better job. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think some amount of response is probably appropriate here, and I guess I would start off by saying that, as far as I could tell from those comments, Mr. Mosher has raised yet again the same issues that he has raised before, and to which I believe the city attorney has responded. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that your view is that the city's, uh, method of operation here with regard to its closed-session agenda and the announcements that we make is in compliance with state law and the Brown Act?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, I guess I would only appeal to you, Mr. Mosher, that, um, it does take time for you to come back here and make the same comments over and over again, and I suppose you have the right to do that as a member of the public, but I would ask for your forbearance in that respect. In respect of the time that this group needs to devote to other issues that are of current importance that we're dealing with for the first time. So I would ask for your forbearance in that respect as we go forward, as to not raising over and over the same items that you have raised in the past and to which we have responded. I recognize that you may not like the response that you've received, but it is this group's responsibility to act appropriately upon the advice of the city attorney, and that's what we will do. I've explained that to you before, and that's what we will do. We pay the city attorney to make these judgments, and we will act upon his judgments. So to the extent that you have new items that you wish to raise, that's fine, that's fair game, but I would appeal to you to please stop repeating old items. And with that, uh, do we have any other comments on the closed-session agenda or any other comments for the public? Seeing none, we will recess to closed session.